To order, welcome to the September 16th meeting of the Bloomfield Township Planning Commission. Those of you who are new here or not, or anybody watching on the Internet or on the cable. The Planning Commission is a seven-member board appointed by the Board of Trustees. We're all just volunteer citizens, residents. Anything that we decide here has to still go before the Board of Trustees for final approval. So there's ample time to have yourself heard here and at the Board of Trustees on any issue that we bring up. Anything has to have a four-member, a vote of four members in order for it to pass. We have seven on the board, so four votes in the affirmative needs to be had. And so with that, the first item on the agenda is attendance. We have a full slate tonight, seven, all seven of us are here, so that's good. Next is the minutes from the last meeting. You've all had an opportunity to look at the minutes. Are there any changes, errors, any comments, anything?
I move approval.
Moved, moved, moved and seconded?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
One abstention. I wasn't here.
Yeah, you were here.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Do we know it?
Okay, right.
Thank you, motion carries.
First thing is public comments. Anybody have anything they want to address to the board, to the commission, other than what's on the agenda? Because that will have plenty of time when we get to that, to talk about that. But anything else, come to the, feel free to come to the podium and make yourself heard. Okay, I don't see any, so now we'll move on to the agenda. We have on tonight's agenda, a public hearing for a site plan and special land use requests for 764-888 Dennison Court, Bloomfield Athletic Training Complex. So why don't you, you're going to give us an overview? Okay.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm Andrea Bibby in the Planning Division. We have a proposal before you this evening. This proposal is coming to you by the property owners of both the Detroit Skate Club and the Bloomfield Tennis and Fitness Club located in Dennison Court. The site is up here, highlighted in the aerial map on your screen. The property is located north of Square Lake Road off Franklin. This would be the west side of Franklin, off Dennison Court. The area specifically that we're talking about is the, just to get you acquainted with the area, the area, the building here further south of the site is the Bloomfield Tennis Club. Over here on the west side of the site is the Detroit Skate Club, which is highlighted here. And in addition to the site plan, we are going to talk about the demolition as well as reconstruction of a new fieldhouse located here to the north of the site. So as you can see, highlighted on your screen, this is the current configuration of the property. The property itself is zoned RP, which is Research Park. The Research Park District within our zoning ordinance does allow for recreational and training uses. So the proposed use of the, which is, the title of this site plan and the proposed use is to create a new Bloomfield Athletic Training Complex. So the site plan is for properties between 764 and 888 Dennison Court that comprise the one single zoning lot that we're looking at to comprise the site plan application. This is actually very exciting for the township as it's, the applicants are seeking these improvements. The end result is an international training complex, which as I stated earlier, would be known as the Bloomfield Athletic Training Complex. The site plan shows building additions. I'll jump ahead to the proposal, the site plan itself. So this is overlaid essentially over the aerial that we just looked at. You can see that the Detroit Tennis Club is located at Building B here. You can see the Detroit Skate Club highlighted here in Building C. And the proposed fieldhouse, as I mentioned earlier, where those existing buildings are to be demolished, will be the construction of the fieldhouse. So the site plan in total includes an addition to the Bloomfield Tennis and Fitness Club, which actually includes, and this is this area which is highlighted in sort of the salmon color. This includes the addition of dormitory addition. This was a very important element as part of the site plan to allow for international athletes to be able to come and stay safely on campus where they're having their training. So that is, one element of the site plan is the dormitory addition, as well as a approximate proposed addition to the Bloomfield Tennis Edition, which is 33,137 square feet, which comprises that dormitory area that I just spoke of, as well as a smaller addition to the south of the Detroit Skate Club, which is highlighted here in the blue. That is an addition of about 4,106 square feet. And then lastly, the new fieldhouse highlighted there in Building A is 128,985 square feet. So we're looking at, and then also a small addition in the front of the Skate Club, which is located here. So you can see where the changes are proposed, they're highlighted to show you what the additions are on those existing buildings. So with the new layout as proposed, the site plan shows Dennison Court, which as I, as you can see a little clearer here in the aerial, the site plan itself is actually looking to terminate here in a cul-de-sac, which you can see on the site plan. This is the cul-de-sac that we're referring to right here. This was a result of a, back in 2014, a portion of Dennison Court right-of-way was abandoned by the Road Commission of Oakland County, and subsequently in 2015, vacated by the township with easements for the township's public water and sewer lines for continued operation and maintenance. The RCOC would like additional right-of-way rededicated such that the entire turnaround area will be public right-of-way, which is approximately 100 and 100. And that's, when I say 100 and 100 feet, which is located within your staff report, we're talking about this area here where the cul-de-sac is to be installed. So this was, that configuration was a result of some historic vacation of the RCOC, as well as working through some more modern agreements as it relates to the maintenance of those, of that water and public water and storm sewer, which is located in that area. So this is the entire site plan. The overall site does show a total of 504 parking spaces. If we look directly within our zoning ordinance and look at what the required parking would be, the required parking would be 513 spaces. However, due to the unique characteristic and the different operations that are occurring on the site, it's not uncommon for an applicant to provide the township with a shared traffic study. That shared traffic study has been reviewed and approved by the township's traffic engineer, indicating that they do accept that, that the studies themselves concluded that based on the actual parking demand, based on the uses, peak usage, and the different variation of uses, when you look at all that in totality, the actual requirement of parking spaces would be 504 to accommodate the parking requirement of the town, of the, of the training complex. I also want to note that there are existing drives which are located on the site. It is noted that the existing drives that occur there today are not looking to be expanded. They're seeking to be resurfaced and restripped as part of the development plan. You can see the different configuration added in the, what the applicant is intending on doing is having a somewhat of a green, the landscape plan, as you can see, is more of a green entryway as you pull into essentially what we're looking at this as, and what the intention is, is essentially you're entering onto a campus. So it's more of a campus sort of feel. So you can see highlighted on your screen, the landscape plan, which actually shows along that entrance drive just past that cul-de-sac, does show a combination of Armstrong maple trees along the main drive that have been, actually have been changed to Autumn Blaze maples, to Armstrong maples. And the intention is that, is to provide more of a columnar type of style of landscaping to, in this, in addition to the columnar, which is more of a, has less of an outgrowth of the, of the tree itself, that it's also better for the fire marshal to be able to access the site. That is something that we had a very important discussion as it relates to existing conditions that we have on site, as well as the proposal of the new cul-de-sac. We, the applicant did develop a plan in which our fire marshal was carefully reviewed their ability to access the site in the case of an emergency and be able to have appropriate ingress and egress. And you can see highlighted on your screen, there are truck radius paths that are shown on the plan that indicate that in fact, using the largest fire truck that the, that the fire department has, that they would be able to access the site appropriately, and that is highlighted within your staff report. So in addition to the landscaping, we can kind of touch a little bit more on that, the landscaping itself, there are 485 parking spaces, or five, based on the parking spaces, 81 trees, 81 parking lot trees are being required. It is indicated in an updated report that I want to point out to you, which was added to your packet today. This is a landscape report from Michael J. Doolan Associates dated September 16th, 2024. In there, they indicate that there are 485 parking spaces on the site, which will require 81 parking lot trees to meet the ordinance requirement. So the applicant is indicating that they do in fact, meet the parking lot requirements in terms of trees. And they also do note within their, within their report, that due to the existing landscape plan indicates that there will be 61 trees on the site, in which 48 are being removed, and 36 of the 48 that are being removed are regulated trees. As a result, anytime in accordance with our tree preservation ordinance, when trees are determined to be landmark trees, there's a value that's associated with that removal, and that's the replacement value. So the applicant does have a replacement totaling 193 inches of caliper. And in this updated report from Michael J. Dool, it indicates that prior to implementation, the applicant shall try to locate and install larger caliper trees. The requirement is a three-inch caliper. Our landscape architect is suggesting a larger caliper tree to replace the replacement, to help reduce the replacement deficit. If the balance of the deficit cannot be balanced on the site, the missing replacements shall be paid into the Township Woodland Trust Fund. So the comments I just made would be encompassed as part of your consideration this evening to comply with the provisions and requirements of the township's landscape architect. So I just wanted to point out that there is, as you can see on your screen, it's a rather tight site to accommodate the drive aisle width of the 26-foot, um, drive aisle fire lane, which is required. And I also want to point out that they also are accomplishing that in the rear of the fieldhouse. That was also very important for the fire marshal to be able to have full, full clearance around the new fieldhouse, because that is a rather large introduction of a single structure into the, into the site. So that was also another conversation that was had, and the applicant was able to satisfy that as well. As you can see here, the proposed additions have been provided, as well as in your report, you do have a copy, or actually shown here in the room, we do have a copy of the various additions that we're speaking of, the elevations and the building materials. Just want to note that the buildings themselves, the aesthetics of the building, this is the Detroit Skate Club addition, so this would be the addition that I spoke of on the southern portion of the property. You can see there are going to be some roof mounted mechanicals that will be installed in this area, and you can see on the top of your slide that they are providing screening for that rooftop mechanical area in compliance with the provisions of our ordinance. You can also notice that the Detroit Skate Club additions will consist of brown and beige brick facade with beige EPIS panels, brown and beige cement block, metal paneling, and siding to match the existing in brown metal canopy. So they are, the intention is to mirror the existing architectural features that are there on the Detroit Skate Club, and you can see the rendering here on your screen of the improvement and the, also the addition that is being proposed along the eastern facade of the Skate Club, which is shown there on the middle slide there. I just want to note that any proposed signage at this time, it would have to be applied to the Design Review Board, and that signage would be addressed separately as part of the submittal. They have provided a graphic, if you will, given an idea of the type of rendering, but at this time, this proposal does not have a, a final sign package. We would intend for that to be coming forward in the future before the Design Review Board. In terms of the Detroit Skate Club addition, you can see the highlighted addition here on your screen, and I'm sure we have the applicant here as well, they have an opportunity to speak, I'm sure they can be happy to walk you through their intended changes for the use of that space. And so now, this is the Bloomfield Tennis and Fitness Club addition. This is the, you can see on the bottom of your screen, on the left-hand side, that represents the addition which would include the dormitory, as well as underground parking in this area. So that is the addition, you can see that it blends in with the current architecture of the building. The proposed changes for the Bloomfield Tennis and Fitness Club to accommodate the dormitory will consist of brown charcoal, gray face brick, brown charcoal and gray EPIS, beige cast stone or limestone, and a brown metal canopy. So you can see that the materials of the metal canopy additions and the coloring, that there's a consistency throughout the site to draw the aesthetics together. And then here is the proposed layout of the underground parking, which would be on the ground floor, and then also you can see the proposed layout of the dormitories, which allow an opportunity for each athlete to have their individual space, where they would be there for a series of, a period of time, and that they're allowed to stay there, and their cars will be secure, and it will be a safe environment for them to be away from home and doing their training. And here is the material boards that I just reviewed of what the coloring and insulation would be along that addition. And then lastly is the fieldhouse. The fieldhouse is, can consist of brown face brick, beige EPIS, beige cast stone or limestone, and brown and metal panel. So again, same coloring, same materials as they're installing on the Skate Club as well as the Tennis Club. So in terms of any variances associated with this project, oh, I'm sorry, here is the interior of the fieldhouse. The intention of the fieldhouse is for a series of training of various sports, whether it be lacrosse, soccer, I'm sure there's some other sports, baseball, okay, there you go. So this is, the intention of this is to serve for a variety of different sports training events for the applicant, athletes. I do want to point out that in the rear of the building, which is just to the north of the fieldhouse, where this property on Dennison Court meets the property to the, immediately to the north, there is a very significant grade change. As a result of that significant grades change, we are, the applicant will be seeking a retaining wall, which is approximately, I think it's 14? 14 feet. The good thing is, is the retaining wall is entirely interior-facing. There really is no visibility because of the grade change. The grade change actually steps down onto the Detroit Skate Club and Tennis property. So essentially, this retaining wall is interior in nature, and therefore there's no visibility, so no variance will have to be sought for that. Additionally, I do want to say the applicant did have a good conversation early on with that adjacent property owner to the north, and that adjacent property owner, Mr. Gollin, is aware of this proposal and that retaining wall, and they've had a very good, good relationship in discussing, and this is not anything that they're not aware of. So that was another significant element to the, to the plan. Again, this is highlighting that, that campus-like entrance with the landscaping. You can see that there are landscape beds that are located within the parking field, which do include various types of trees, as well as vegetation, to accentuate the existing condition. So anytime we have a site and it's an existing condition, and we take a look at it, we have to look at what variances are being created by this request, as well as which variances are existing non-conformities. So in terms of kind of a rundown with the variances, most of them are a result, let me go back to the original site plan here so I can go through those variance requests. So one variance would be based on the front yard setback. This is a little bit different because we have to measure, we're measuring, a front yard setback is measured from the right-of-way, essentially. The right-of-way is this cul-de-sac that's coming out into the site. So from the edge of that right-of-way into the property measures is the required front yard setback. So the front yard setback of the Dennison Court cul-de-sac is actually 75 feet. The fieldhouse, where it's being added here, along here in this easterly corner, it's actually going to encroach into that 75-foot Dennison Court cul-de-sac. So they will be seeking a six, they're asking for 60 feet with 75 feet being required. So that's a variance that essentially is being brought on based on this cul-de-sac and the layout of the site, and that is one variance that would be new. Additionally, side yard setbacks, there would be a, there's a 26-foot setback on the east of the fieldhouse, which would be located here, east, and that is required to be 40 feet. The applicant is proposing 26 feet. 26 feet being that magic number to meet us, meet that fire marshal's requirement of the drive aisle. So that's where we get the 26-foot. So they will be seeking a variance as it relates to the setbacks of 40 feet to the fieldhouse. I also want to point out that to the east of the Bloomfield Tennis Court, which, Club, which is down here, we have an existing non-conforming where they have a 20-foot setback. So we already have an existing non-conforming that's located down here. So essentially, despite the variance, the alignment and the design of the existing building matching with the fieldhouse are in the same, a very similar location. So I want to point that out. I also want to point out the maximum building height that is permitted within this district. There is a maximum height of 35 feet with a three-foot, 35-foot, I'm sorry, 35-foot height with a three-foot variance. The Detroit Skate Club is between 28 to 35 feet in height. The Birmingham, the Bloomfield, my apologies, the Bloomfield Tennis Courts, Tennis Club, again, is required to be, they're between 34.5 and 2.5 parapet. The variance comes in with the height of the fieldhouse. The height of the fieldhouse, the maximum height of it is 61.5. So they will be seeking a variance for the height of the fieldhouse, which I think, based on the utility and the understanding and the need for the height of a fieldhouse, the need for that additional height is, is necessary. And I also want to call out too, this, it's behind this building in which we have that 14-foot drop, we've got the retaining wall. So if we're, if we were out there, this actually, even though it's 60 feet high in height, the actual scale of it actually seems much more in line with what's around it due to that grade change. So you're not going to see 61 feet sticking out straight from the ground, it's actually sunken in. So I just want to point that out. As well as, we do have requirements for loading spaces. We do have some loading spaces on the site that do not meet the requirements in terms of dimensions, one of which being a loading area at the Detroit Skate Club, which is an existing non-conforming. That would be another variance. And then also pointing out side yard setbacks, again, these relate to existing non-conformities that are already out there. They already exist. For the Bloomfield Tennis Club, they have an existing zero-foot setback, as well as the side yard setback for the Detroit Skate Club to the south, that's also a zero setback as well. That's related to the parking setbacks, not the building setbacks. I should have clarified that. So there are parking lot setbacks that exist on site that do not comply. So essentially, a majority of the variances are existing non-conformities, but also the, just pointing out the setback for the fieldhouse, and the height of the fieldhouse, as well as deficiency in loading spaces. Those are the variances that we're, that we're looking at. And then again, just pointing out that the applicant has provided a photometric study. Our zoning ordinance does require that all lighting has to comply with the photometrics, which is provided, which is minimal to no impact or any outflow from the existing site. The poles that are being provided do meet the required 20-foot maximum height, downward shielded, and they have also provided an illumination that essentially shows you what the nighttime illumination would look like on the site. And here are some existing photographs. So this would be looking along the eastern elevation of the Detroit Skate Club, and then this is actually looking kind of in between the Detroit Skate Club and the Tennis Club. And you can see, this is the parking area in which the lights are being replaced, and then they're also doing the re, the re-striping and asphalt of the parking area. And you can see some of the existing vegetation, which is on the site. This did have an opportunity, the site plan did have an opportunity to go before the Design Review Board on August 21st. It did receive a favorable response from the, from the Design Review Board, in which it was forwarded on for consideration to the Planning Commission. The, it has been reviewed by our various departments. The Fire Department, as I, as I stated earlier, did review the site, and they find that there's no additional comments at this time, noting that any additional fire-related comments may be added at the time of building permits. The Police Department has no issues with the proposed project. And I do want to point out that we do have an updated memo that essentially is the same approval from our Environmental Engineering Department as what's in your packet, but this is dated February 29th, 2024, and in their letter, they do state that they do not have any issues. They find that the site plan would be acceptable to proceed through the site plan process, addressing that anything remaining comments as it relates to the engineering would have to be addressed at the time of engineering plan review. But I also do know that the applicant does have their engineer here as well, so if there's any specific questions that the board may have regarding the stormwater easement and that discussion, there would be, they do have a representative here to answer that question as well. So I just wanted to highlight that. I did note the Design Review Board recommendation. And lastly, within your packet, I do have a list, there are six items in which the Planning Commission, after holding a public hearing, taking public input for your consideration, that you would consider the following. Compliance with the requirements of the township's departments. Compliance with the requirements of the township landscape architect, which encompasses those comments in which I read earlier. Compliance with the requirements of the township traffic engineer. Seeking the required variances from the zoning board of appeals. Existing drive aisles and parking areas shall be resurfaced and restripped as part of the overall development. And lastly, seeking approval for signage from the Design Review Board. With that, I am happy to answer any questions about the site plan, but I do know that we have representatives here from the Skate Club that would probably be better than myself to probably explain to you what the impetus is and what their overall plan is for this project, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, before we get to the applicant, then any, bring it back to the board, the commission, any questions or comments from anybody?
Save them for the applicant.
Okay, very good. All right, then, why don't we go ahead, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Dennis Cowan. I'm with the firm Plunkett Cooney. I'm representing the three applicants who are here before you. We do have three separate pieces of property. These are the operations on each parcel will be independently run and operated, but there is certainly a coordination and a lot of communication and working together to make this what we believe will be the premier athletic training complex in the state of Michigan, if not the Midwest. We already have a wonderful international reputation of the Detroit Skating Club with what they have done over the years. This will augment that, and then with the addition of the fieldhouse, create a whole other dimension for field sports, included also with the ice sports and ice athletic opportunities. We have the team here tonight. So first, Jason Dungeon, who is the senior manager and director at the Detroit Skate Club. Also Jay Parks, who is representing the Bloomfield Tennis Club and Big Melon LLC, which is the owner of the property where the fieldhouse will be developed. Brandon Kreitzman is our architect of record with Detroit Architectural Group, and Tion Sujak is our project engineer with Sujak Engineering. This is a very special project that has been years in the making. It's taken a lot of discussion, debate, and reiterations between the parties to come to an agreement on what exactly needs to be done to maximize the opportunities, recreational and athletic, not only for township residents, but for residents in the general area, and quite frankly, from around the globe. We do want to thank your planning department and all of your departments. There's been a lot of dialogue over several years, but we think that dialogue is very positive, and because of it, we believe we have the best project. And because of it, we believe we have the best project that we can present. So before Brandon gives the architect's presentation, both Jason and Jay, who have been very instrumental and worked for years on this project, wanted to address you.
I'll go first because you're more important, really. What I want to do is first of all, thank everyone. This, we feel is just a tremendous opportunity. And I'm going to try and add some color around things that are going on in your community you may not know about, and if you do, great. But you know, sometimes you just forget about it. When I kind of sat down and went back through, it's, it's just amazing what's going on here. I mean, the tennis program is one of the top junior tennis programs in the state. They've produced more, athletes have gotten scholarships for Division One, Division Two than any program that exists. The coaches that are involved and the co-directors have won 12 state championships. I mean, there's just a lot of good things going on in the tennis program. And just recently, if you followed U.S. Open, Taylor Fritz, U.S., was in the finals, unfortunately lost, but he was coached by Mike Russell. Mike Russell is a Bloomfield Township resident or was a resident. He played at Bloomfield Tennis. He coached early on in his career and went on to obviously be a tremendous asset for the, just tennis in general. But tennis really isn't the whole story. Maybe 15 years ago, something close to that, we had been approached a few times from different groups about trying to come up with some field training for, actually the Skate Club was part of that discussion, and then some other athletes that approached us. So we put us two small fields in, and the demand was incredible. And some of the things that have come out of that, it's really kind of mind-blowing. But, and it's really about being a private training situation because there's a lot of professional athletes in this area that want to train and don't want necessarily the public to see them. To the fact, you know, Matthew Stafford is training there, Dominic Insu, Dominic Loyola. There's lots of Detroit lines have come in, expressed a desire to do it on a bigger scale, which we weren't able to accommodate. But in addition to that, some of the local high school teams approached us about doing some indoor training, that they could do it, again, very privately. And the most active club that had come in was, you know, the Brother Rice Lacrosse Program, the men's program. And they've been training there for quite some time. And if you know anything about that program, it's, they've won 24 state championships. They're absolutely dominant. They've produced countless Division One athletes to the effect. Jason Leacy, 2018, he went on to Yale, took them to the national championship, scored the game-winning goal for Yale, just tremendous. And then Sergio Perkovic, if anybody knows that name, he went on to Notre Dame, took them to the Final Four twice as captain. And two-time First Team All-American, just a tremendous, tremendous player. And then last but not least, the women's programs. Cranbrook, women's lacrosse, does dry training here. And if anybody knows anything about that, this young lady that was produced out of there is just incredible. Isabel Sken, she went on to play at the University of Northwestern, captained that team to the national championship in 2023, led the nation in goals. She's the National Player of the Year two times in a row. That's absolutely, that's like winning the Heisman Trophy twice in a row. It's just unheard of. She finished her career with more goals than any collegiate lacrosse player has ever scored, man or woman. And she's right here. It's just, and you don't, we don't know about it, we don't talk about it that much. And this was an opportunity to kind of put some color around that. Because, and these are not great facilities that we're able to do this in right now. And we really believe with this new fieldhouse, the sky's the limit for what we can do. And accommodate, I mean, this is local stuff, but you know, now we've got, we've had this world-class training with, you know, Olympic athletes going on that we've all heard a little bit about, but Jason's going to add on to that. But it's just incredible in this little area, what's, what's been going on. I just wanted to share a little of that and put some color around it. Because we, you know, obviously, dimensions and heights and landscape and all that's important. But it's, it's really, at our heart, is what's going on with these young athletes and what more we can do to help them. Because it's, it's just what our, where our hearts are at. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Dungeon, and I am the Senior Managing Director at Detroit Skating Club. I have been, I'm actually, it's funny we're talking about this. I'm actually a product of the Detroit Skating Club. I entered that building in September, and it's, it's very ironic that now we're in September. I entered that building September of 1979. Is when I, when I, when I walked in that building. I'm still affiliated with them, 45 years later. I have been lucky enough, I was lucky enough, I was on both the 1994 and 1998 Olympic team through Detroit Skating Club. That's where I got my, my, my start. In, in, at the 1998 Olympic Games in Nagano, Japan, the team was, let's see, there's two pairs, no, yeah, two dance, two pairs, that's four, five, six. There was about nine members of the team, five of them were from or affiliated with the Detroit Skating Club. It's never happened in the history of, of the Olympic team. It probably never will again. Because you don't, you don't get 75% of Olympic team affiliated with one building. You know, we have, we have a huge country, we have thousands of athletes. There's hundreds of thousand-figure skaters throughout the country. And to have that many come from one area on one team is unheard of. We also have had three Olympic champions. We've had about six or seven world champions. We've had national champions, international skaters from over 17 countries around the world. I was lucky enough also, I've also coached at the Olympic Games. U.S. skaters, I've taught kids that came and trained from Italy, from Japan, from Turkey, Germany, you name it, they've been here, they've trained Korea. So like they say, we are, we are, we are an international unit. And the funny thing is, is I don't know if any of you even, even have really heard about us. You know, we fly under the radar. We have always flown under the radar, which is also kind of, kind of a little trouble once in a while. But it's okay. And now, now we want to, you know, start to expand upon that. We, we have also been given a designation from the ISU. I don't know if anybody's really familiar with how, how that works, but the ISU is the International Skating Union. That is basically our governing body for U.S. figure skating, right? They're the one that sets all the rules for all international competition. So they set the rules for worlds, international competitions that are going on right now. And the only one that stands above them is the IOC. Everybody's very familiar with the IOC since we just had the Olympic Games, right? And they gave us a designation of a Center of Excellence. There's only 12 of them in, in the world, six of them with figure skating, six of them with speed skating. We are the only figure skating building in North and, in the Western Hemisphere, actually. So North and South America, we are the only one. There's three in Europe, there are two in Asia. There are two speed skating ones in North America. But, so that is a great honor. Now, why is the dormitory is important? Because one of the requirements for us to be in compliance to retain this is that we have to have places for kids that come in from overseas walking distance, right? You gotta understand, you know, growing up in Michigan, if you grew up in Michigan, the first thing you have is you buy a car. Why? Because we drive everywhere. But the rest of the world really doesn't. They walk. They have public transportation. Michigan is not very friendly in that area. So it's really important that we get that, that done for us. Also, what'll happen is, if we build this, is foot traffic. The more people you have come into an area, the more people we have come in, you know, into, into our club down that road, the bigger our name gets. Yeah, it is funny. What, what it'll, what can this do for you, right? What, what does it do for you? What has it done for me? And you know, and I thought about this when Steve said, I need you to speak in front of this board. And to be honest with you, skating in front of 20,000 people doesn't bother me at all. Speaking to you? It's awful.
We won't bite you.
I know, I know, I know. But it's just funny how, you know, people, how do you do that? How do you speak in front of 10 people? I don't know. Right, right. But you know, and you think about, I can just give you a brief, brief history of what, what this has done for me. I mean, I've stood on the Great Wall of China. I've stood in the Forbidden Palace. I've been in Red Square. All right, I've seen St. Basil's Cathedral. I've been to the castles of the Shoguns in Japan. All right, in other words, I've been to 33 countries in the world. Some of them don't even exist anymore. Because if you do the math, I'm old enough where the, where the wall was the wall. And when I talk about the wall, it's not the Great Wall of China. It was the Iron Curtain. I've been behind the Iron Curtain, right? I've been to the Berlin Wall, when it was up, and after it's been down. You know, I've stood in the first concentration camp ever in the world. So, you know, and that's what skating has done. And that's what this place has opportunities for everybody to do. That's just my story. I'm one of many that have come through. And we have, we have, we had a girl today that trains at her club, up and coming. She's actually flying right now to Turkey to compete there. Last week, we had a pair team that I actually helped a little bit. They just competed in, in Estrava, Czech Republic. In two more weeks, they'll be going to Gdansk, Poland. So, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to say about it, but this would be an amazing thing if we can get it done. If we look at what, what people are doing in other parts of the world, what the Chinese are doing, what the Russians have done, what other, what other countries are doing, this is the way it's going. They're, they're putting together these sports complexes because they realize that sports are sports, right? My son plays football, has nothing to do with skating. But it's all about balance and agility. It's no different than what I do on the ice, you know? So all these sports can help each other. And it gives kids an opportunity to see parts of the world that most of us only get to read about. So, I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration, and I hope you can see the value of this. Thank you.
There is no way I can follow those two presentations. I was going to talk about stormwater retention, but I'll defer that to later because that's too mundane. But I hope that fills in. You know, you see plans, but even having listened to this and knowing a lot about it, the world's a smaller place, and Bloomfield Township is part of it. And this will make it from a recreational and athletic opportunities, an even bigger player. And so with that, I'm going to have Brandon come up and lead us through. I think Henry gave a great overview, but he's got a few things he wants to add for your consideration. Thank you.
I was hoping to follow stormwater, but I guess you guys made Jason nervous enough that he failed to mention that I believe he's a two-time silver Olympic medalist. Is that correct? All right, well, I got some bad info from Mr. Parks over here. But my name's Brandon Kreitzman. I'm a principal at Detroit Architectural Group. Obviously, you've had a lot of information presented to you and additional information, materials, and numbers thrown at you this evening. I don't intend to sit and run through all of that again. But if we're able to flip back to the site plan, there are a couple of key points that I would like to touch. As we've heard about, obviously, the mission of this operation is to try and create a cohesive campus-like environment. This is intended to create an athletic ecosystem that helps to build off of each other. You know, the office spaces on the front side of the Bloomfield Tennis and Fitness house doctors, there's therapists involved, there's, you know, physios, there's all kinds of people that all work in the same general kind of field. And as Jason was mentioning, it's all about agility and balance. These athletes in one place will all be able to share some of these same services. So that's, that's a benefit of having it all in one place. But how do we make that a cohesive thing that makes sense and, and looks like it's all part of one, one campus? So we started with the idea that, you know, Dennison Court had been vacated, I believe it was back in 2014, back to the little cul-de-sac. So what we're trying to do is present from the very outset, when you come off of Franklin, you hit Dennison, you're met with this landscaped island in the center of that turnaround. We're envisioning some sort of entrance component. Signage will be discussed and dealt with later. But that'll be a nice landscaped island, and from there, an introduction to the campus. One of the big issues that they've had in this area in the past is during athlete activities, whether it's, you know, shows, presentations, drop-offs, pickups, you got a lot going on in a smaller area. So we spent a great deal of time working on circulation and worked on that with the Fire Marshal as well. And that all starts right there with that roundabout at the center. You'll immediately be able to turn off of that to access Building A with the fire lane, the 26-foot lane, fire lane that runs, call it east to west on this plan. People will be able to drop off athletes, pick athletes up, and then make their way back to that center drive aisle and exit without interrupting the traffic flow at either Building B or Building C. Similarly, if you're going to visit Building C, you're able to traverse the roundabout, make your way up that central aisle. You can see if they peel off to the right, there's that big turnaround there right in front of the blue addition that you see. That again, is intended for athletes to be picked up, dropped off, and remove that element of the pedestrian traffic from the rest of the circulation on the site. Similarly, on Building B, we've got the opportunity to go down to the end of the long drive, turn around, pick people up. That is a little, you know, Bloomfield Tennis and Fitness operates a little differently. Most of those people are driving themselves. But from a campus perspective, we wanted the architecture of these buildings to match each other as well. Now, the Bloomfield Tennis and Fitness Facility, Building B, that exists already. It's a two-story brick facility with a lot of Eiffel facade. We absolutely mimicked that in the design of Building A. So when you look at Building A, the fieldhouse, the brick is the same. We've had the same brick blend matched up. It's a custom blend, and that's what's been presented on the board here. You can see the entrances from Building A and Building B are aligned vertically. So north to south, they will face each other. And that design was intended to mimic the existing design that's on, the existing condition on Building B. So there's a lot of design cues on Building A that are immediately reminiscent and reflective of Building B. As was mentioned in the presentation by Ms. Bibby earlier, Building C is a little bit different animal. The Detroit Skating Club has, you know, there was the original building. I believe there's multiple additions over time and quite a few materials. We're actually removing some of the oddball materials that have made their way onto the facility over time as windows have been infilled and things have been modified as that building has evolved. But the additions off the, the addition off the east side, we're utilizing all the same materials that we're intending to keep. Again, we matched the brick. There's a, there's a banded brick entrance at the front entrance. And I'm not sure how to.
You gotta hold the button down.
So you can see in the bottom photo, that's a composite of the building. And there's a, you know, the main entrance that you see kind of in the center of the bottom. And it's repeated in the left side of the middle drawing. We put a brake line in there because the scale of the buildings are so long and skinny that it gets, gets hard to see at a level of detail that's, you know, helpful for you. But the existing brick at the entrance has bands to it. There's, I believe, 24 inches, or maybe it's, yeah, I think it's 24 inches of a dark brick blend, 24 inches of a light blend, 24 inches of dark, 24 inches of light. And that is the brick accent that you see at the existing building today. So we're taking design cues from there in both the eastern addition on that building as well as the one down on the south end. The south end of the building, which you see on the top image there, it's primarily extra locker room space. It's primarily mechanical spaces. The chiller improvements that are planned for the Skate Club are intended to be housed at this location. And again, as was mentioned, they are all screened, and they are elevated, and they will not be visible from ground level. The unique aspect here, I think the, the last one to talk about would be the, the dormitory addition. Hold down the top red one?
Which one do you want?
That's perfect. If you take me out of the equation, it works a lot better. Yeah, so that's perfect right there. We can flip back and forth between the floor plans and elevations. But ultimately, one of the requirements for these Centers of Excellence is that athletes are able to stay on-site. And while we have maintained- are able to stay on-site. And while we have maintained the opportunity for pedestrian traffic to go between the Detroit Skating Club building and this building through dedicated sidewalks, we do also want them to have the opportunity to have parking on-site. So, that first level is all grade-level parking. There will be a pass to get into it. It will be secured parking because obviously that's at the very least an overnight stay or short-term stay. We're anticipating visiting coaches, visiting athletes. Their duration of their stay is going to vary based on the situation. There's a small little commissary off the front. I mean, essentially vending machines and things of that sort for people to, to pick up because they're going to be living upstairs. It is not group rooms. It's all individual rooms. There's single, single occupant rooms with a shared kitchen on each level. So, it's not necessarily anticipated to be full-on cooking, full staff there all the time, but from a convenience perspective, all of those amenities are there located in-house. There's laundry spaces for them. There's entertainment spaces, study rooms, meeting rooms, the things of that sort. But the, the architecture of that building was purposely intended to be a little more complimentary of the existing buildings, complimentary to the design of the fieldhouse and the additions at the dormitory, but also intended to be different than the rest of those spaces as they are a residential use and something obviously a little bit different from the rest of the campus. And if we could just flip back to the, the site plan one more time. As was mentioned, we've got, you know, we get presented with that landscaped island at the outset. We have fit in as much landscaping as we could. This is actually not reflective of the most recent landscape plans that you have in your packet because we did revisit the spacing of the trees, excuse me, the spacing of the trees. We decreased the spacing of the trees, which we were able to do because we went with something more columnar in nature to try to accommodate requests from the fire marshal while at the same time trying to increase the number of trees. So, the spacing of the trees along that main drive has been decreased and we were able to add, I think, an additional 13 trees in this latest iteration. And all of the trees along that main drive aisle have been increased from a three-inch caliper to a four-inch caliper at that location. Outside of that, any shortcomings, as was mentioned previously, will be paid into the fund and the, and the applicants are prepared to do so on that one. So, I think the only other piece, other than trying to create this, this athletic ecosystem, how do you navigate that? Both pedestrian circulation and vehicular circulation, any signage that happens on-site will all be matching so that each facility will be complimentary to each other and it'll be consistent throughout the entirety of the campus. And with that, there's certainly, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
What's the egress point for the parking under the dormitory?
So, there, there is a, there's an entrance and an exit.
Can you just go back to the floor plan?
And so, if you look, so we're talking about the floor plan on the right. The entrance is anticipated to be up, call it a third of the way back from the front. People can come in, pick their spot. Down in the lower left of that floor plan, there will be an exit.
Hey, any other que, anybody? Neil?
Not a question, but...
Thank you for the, the changes to the, to the, actually the plan for the trees and everything that you presented, which is a little different than the designer viewpoint, you know. And certainly, I think, been upgraded in a nice way. But even more importantly, I think it's just such a great plan and it adds so much, not only to your overall, excuse me, overall project, skating club, the other types of sporting training, but more importantly, it adds a sense of excitement and energy to the township that often is lacking in a beautiful bedroom community that is lacking in many ways in, as far as excitement and energy. And so, it adds so much. It helps put you back on the, well, you're already on the map, but even more so on the map and also Bloomfield Township. And it's a great, you know, collaboration between all of you and our various departments. So, I'm very excited and I just compliment you. Just think it's an outstanding plan. I remember when it started many years ago, just the whole idea of it, a long time ago. So, just excited that, again, it's, it's moving forward and it looks outstanding.
On behalf of all of us, thank you. We appreciate that. I've only been involved five years, so I don't have as much invested as these guys.
Again, thank you for what you did here and what it's going to do for the township. And obviously, I'm, I'm going to be in support of it and maybe even selfishly because the property, I have a property that borders your property. And obviously, the value's going to be enhanced because this is a international magnificent project. But I do have some business questions, just so I can understand how this thing's going to happen. I don't know if Mr. Cohen is the right person to ask or if you, but...
I'll do my best and defer...
We're dealing with three different owners. And are all three projects, because there's an addition to two of the buildings and obviously the new construction, are they all going to happen together or is this going to be a phased type of thing? And the, the question that, you know, sometimes projects come along and I don't understand how the business side works. So, how does something like this, it's a major project, how does it get financed? Is it already in place or is that not an issue due to the magnitude of the associations involved in the training? And then what happens when, how, how is, how do we maintain all these common areas? Or are they, are they even common areas or does everybody own a certain part? Just want to make sure that we know how it's going to be phased and is it properly financed and how is it going to be? Because 10 years from now, I, I visited the site today and it's mass disrepair. The paving, the cracked curbs, the, the buildings that you're going to demolish couldn't be demolished soon enough. And I also noticed the major grade difference. And maybe Andrew or Patty can answer the question. I know you mentioned that the building was 61 feet high, but even on a home where you're allowed 35 feet, don't we usually average the peak to the eve or something? So, the building technically might only be 50 feet high, for example, if you did that. And, and I, I had no idea that the grade change was 14 feet. I guessed it was at least 10. So, you know, if the average height of the building's 50 feet and it's 14 feet lower than surrounding grade, it's not such a tough thing to swallow. So, that, that doesn't bother me. What, there's, there's a lot of things that I like, but I just wanted to understand, you know, is this thing going to happen? And how is it going to happen? And how's it going to be maintained in the future? Because it's a major, it's a major undertaking and it's not under one person's control.
Sure.
And that's...
I'll be more than happy to tackle the easy geography, or sorry, geometry questions and then I'll punt to other people on the rest of that. You are correct. The buildings are typically measured by halfway up the gable. So, while the building does have a peak at 61 feet, four inches in the documents, we'd have to, I'd have to run back, check something different. But I do believe that the midpoint of that gable is around 52. So, your, your math is, is spot on. The grade change on the north side of the property peaks at its highest level at about 14 feet and then it tapers to smaller numbers, I think eight feet on one end, 10-ish feet on the other side. As far as my understanding of how the project will be implemented, it is my understanding that there will be a phased approach. And all the rest of the difficult questions on the business side, ownership side, management side, I'm going to defer to my friends to the right on this one.
You want to lead off and I'll, well, here, the, the first thing is, is I mentioned earlier, because we wanted to be clear about it, each one of the properties is independently owned. They will be responsible for all the maintenance and their buildings and their parking. The parking is shared. So, in other words, no one's objecting if, you know, if somebody from the skating club goes and parks at the, at the fieldhouse property, that, that's fine. Everybody understands that. And, and that's been happening over the years to begin with. The one shared facility will be the, the stormwater. We signed about, I'm, I'm the rookie here because I only came on two years ago. And I was brought on to work with the road commission. We entered into an easement agreement when despite the vacation, the road commission retained an easement for drainage. So, that, that's something unique. All the other utilities are with the township and that's great. All those things are in place. But with this one, we entered into both an easement agreement and a stormwater man, stormwater maintenance agreement, which the three properties are responsible for. And they'll, I have to do an annual report, an annual repair report to the, through the road commission. That was probably the most complex easement and maintenance agreement I ever did. So, but that's all in place and was approved earlier this year by the road commission. So, that kind of gives you an overview of the structure. In terms of the, the financing, each group is going to be responsible for what's on their property. With respect to any of these features, you know, we have to get to the, to the finish line eventually with the township board in order to have a completed set of plans so you can finalize your financing. But that is being worked on as we speak, so we don't anticipate any type of problem with that. But it will be phased and I think Jay can talk more about that because the fieldhouse will be first. That's definitely going to...
So, can the fieldhouse survive without the dormitories or does the fieldhouse and dormitories have to be part of the first phase?
No, the first phase, as we see it, would be the road improvements, including the parking improvements in Building A. And Building A, you know, practically speaking, the demand is tremendous. You know that, you know, I'd also bought the old soccer arena. We've got, this will be the only international soccer field built to international standards. There's only, I think, one or two in the entire state and will be one of them under, under roof. So, we've been approached by pretty much every group out there to get space. It's, it's going to be at a premium. The, that building's not going to be hard to finance. We're going to also do the improvements as part of that. Now, the, the Building A and Building B are essentially owned by the same group. They're different LLCs, but the members are essentially all the same.
Understood.
And, and then as far as the dormitories, we're, we're kind of working that out because they're going to take probably most of them for the international athletes and they'll be part of their, their fees involved and what they pay the, the skate club. But we intend to build it and finance it.
So, assuming, you know, variances are granted, township board approval, do you, do you suspect to start in 2025?
We would love to, in the spring.
Would, would the, would the dormitories follow the next following year, most likely? And then the last thing would be the improvements to the skate club?
That's, that's kind of how I see it. Because we've got some stormwater due there. The, the dorms are going to be, we've got a lot of utility work just to get that site buildable, essentially.
I'm familiar.
Yeah.
One question I have about our friends at the fire department with their 26-foot requirement, because we have compliance with that on some of the projects that are later because it didn't used to be. Are you allowed to drop off within that? Because some of them that are, that are designed for the circulation are no parking, stopping or standing. Do you already have an agreement that you can do drop off within that? Was there a discussion specific to that? Because...
I don't remember a specific discussion around that.
No, there has not. No, there has not been.
Do you think that'll be possible or they could just do the drop off somewhere else?
I think because of the identified signage that's required with a fire lane, I think that you've answered your question of no stopping, standing or parking, that that would not be permitted.
Okay. So, if that's the case, I mean, you, I'm not sure how many people come at a time, if there's a lineup. Like sometimes when you look at the schools, there's 20 cars lined up, but then 10 minutes later, there's zero cars. Do, do you have a way to provide for that if you're not allowed to do it within the 26 feet? It's just something that...
Honestly, you know, off the top of my head, I don't, I, I can't even remember. I know where the, the center lane is the drive. Well, we had that other one up that showed it, but...
Center lane is the drive. And I, I think in our building, that might be more of an issue just because we run TPH, which is a hockey school in the morning. Sometimes we'll have four or five kids being dropped off at the time. I mean, right now, actually, this design, if you, if you look at it, the way you, with the way you come up and then you have to go to the right. Right now, the way it's designed, they come in and they are stopping to drop off and it's right next to a sign that says no stopping, no doing anything. They just do it. In this, it actually, that, this part, like the part now that's in front of the beaver, it's the, the middle surface, that is not a fire lane because it's not 26 feet. So, that actually helps us and doesn't hurt us. It actually gives us a chance for this to, to be done because the way it's designed now, that doesn't even exist because the cul-de-sac is moved back.
Right.
Right? And so, they're doing it on, right in front of Building C where we actually do have a fire lane. And there has been issues with that.
So, we, I think, I speak for myself and Neil's already said it, but we all want this thing to be successful. And it's always been so far in the past however many years in cooperation with the township, which we like. So, I just want to make sure that we don't miss, you know, make a simple mistake that causes a problem.
Believe me, we're happy to see this because that does take a problem off our plate. Trust me.
Right on cue. There they go right now, see?
Right on cue.
I do have to say that I...
Perfect timing.
I had to go pick up my daughter from dance class. So, I, I do apologize.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And it was a pleasure hearing your story.
Yeah.
So, my, my, not concerns, but the questions were, you know, is it, I don't understand this type of projects. I wanted to make sure it's financeable and you made it clear that it's easily financeable and how it's going to be phased. And again, I, I read the latest letter from Michael Dool's office and I appreciate the extra work that you went to. So, I mean, from my perspective, I'm going to be in full support.
Thank you.
100%. Just needed to have a few things clarified. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to, I was also keenly aware of the road commission's easement agreement. So, can, can you walk us through that? Before you do, maybe Mr. SuJack can, can do that for you. Before you do, I think that it was an excellent point that Richie brought up about phasing. And while I am also in, in absolute support for this project, which I think is fantastic for all parties concerned, when multiple properties are involved with different owners, even if there's some mutual owners in one LLC to the other, a phasing plan can be a very important instrument to, to make sure that the properties are attended to in a meaningful manner so that nothing's partially done, right? In this instance, it would seem to me that the engineering and the site stabilization would be required to be in place before any building permit would be issued or the phase plan of the building. I say that for the benefit of my colleagues and so they know how I'm thinking. But could you walk us through the stormwater arrangement and how it evolves into the new plan?
Yeah. I could, I'll let Tia on to come up to, on the more technical aspects, but in general, it's the Denison Court area. There needs to be some reworking of the stormwater coming from Building A because currently there's a, across that one corner closest to Denison Court on the far west side, there's a stormwater pipe that has to be moved. And then there'll be facilities underneath the former Denison Court detention facilities that are underneath there. So, that's basically the, the, the kind of simple engineering type things that have to be done. But again, we're at the intersection of, of the Building A and B is primarily where most of that is going to happen between the two properties underneath the road and then somewhat with the, with the Detroit Skating Club. So, the primary responsibility is going to fall on the owners of Building A and B for that.
Is there detention there now? There's no detention now? So, there's piping there that was an interceptor or whatever that's getting, yeah, please.
Tia and SuJack, SuJack Engineering, the most boring person here tonight, but I hope I can answer your questions. So, Denison Court, which was a public road owned by the road commission with a storm, existing stormwater, excuse me, storm sewer owned and operated by the road commission, was vacated. However, they main, they retain the easements over the storm line, which is fairly common. On the onset of the project, going back, I'm going to say about four years, we met with the road commission about the criteria for the stormwater management for this facility. the road commission about the criteria for the stormwater management for this facility. The first thing that they did was they investigated if there were any issues for all the downstream storm sewers. There weren't. So they said, based on that, they were just going to help hold us to a more minimal stormwater requirements since this isn't a brand new entire facility. As you might be aware, if you redevelop an entire area, you have to bring up the entire area to the current stormwater requirements. Since buildings B and C are in place and are going to remain in place, they looked at it more from the approach, they didn't have an existing, any existing issues that we should upgrade the detention facilities to account for 100-year storm for any improved areas, meaning increased impervious areas.
So you don't have to bring it up to current standards?
We don't have to bring the entire area up to, no. We have to bring the amount of impervious area we're increasing up to the 100-year requirements along with sediment removal and so forth.
Nobody else feeds into that existing storm?
I think there's one line to the north between buildings A and C, I'm going from recollection, that goes somewhere off to the northwest. It was like a minimal sized line, I want to say it was a 12-inch, that does tie into it from upstream. But other than that, we, when the road commission looked at, they looked at what was going on downstream to make sure there wasn't a problem in place to where, you know, as you know, sometimes there's a flooding issue before anyone even starts and they look at that and say, well, we want something over and above. So we worked with the road commission upfront on this one and they, hence the drafting of the easements that have taken place and so forth, that was all part of that. This is actually going to be a, from an engineering standpoint, it's a problematic site because I'm basically trying to jam a piece of a jigsaw puzzle in there as far as making all the existing storm, without having to gut the entire facility, all the existing utilities, having to rework water main, sanitary sewers, storm sewers across the board and God knows what else is in there because records tend to get a little spotty on these. We tried to keep a minimal footprint for waters it was leaving before it went back into the public system as far as Dennison Court, which is to the far east, and try and treat as much of it as possible, rerouting the existing storm lines that are going to be under building A, tried to get it all cleaned up. And to do that without impacting all the other utilities, most likely, we're going to have to put a pump in only because of the fact the lines are so shallow in order to get the maximum amount. That's the short of it. I hope that wasn't too boring.
Yeah, that was good, they won on one part without having to put full detention in there. But what was related to the stormwater maintenance agreement that required you to provide the road commission 100 or 110-foot easement at the end of the cul-de-sac?
I don't think the cul-de-sac requirement as far as the easement was related to the storm. I think
To the right away?
No, that was
It was related to the turnaround of the snow truck coming in. Even though you guys have some problems with that, the
Okay. Because that part of Dennison Court is still under the road commission, that stub that leads out to Franklin. So they wanted a turnaround for the, for the, for the plow trucks, yes.
Well, presumably they wanted a right-of-way easement for two of them to go side by side and plow your grass, too.
The nice thing, though, about that, the nice thing about that cul-de-sac or that little turnaround is what it created, and you can't quite see it as well here on this, but that allows you to make an immediate right to building A or an immediate right to building B.
Yeah, I read that.
Get right into the parking area so you don't have to go all the way down, you know, we still call it Dennison Court, you don't have to go down there. So anybody using building A or building B's got a shortcut coming right off of that.
No, I think it's an excellent plan. I was going to better the Olympic silver medalist that I started going to that hockey arena in 1972. And I had four boys that all played lacrosse for the program. So I think the site plan's fantastic.
I agree.
I think the visual is going to be fantastic. I mean, it's a sea of asphalt right now, it's nothing.
Cracked asphalt.
You know, the words world-class are, you know, amazingly electric, but they're even more so when it's true. So we wish you all the luck. I do think a phasing plan, you know, Richie asked a really good question about business that we don't ask often because it's usually sole proprietor, but you've got a multiple, multiple endeavors here and I think that's going to be an important question when you come before the board of trustees.
Okay, anybody else?
I just have a structured question. Is this an association or a partnership of effort or an LLC or some other kind of umbrella that?
No, the two, the two buildings, although they're under separate LLCs, A and B are really common, as Jay mentioned, common ownership, same partners own those two. The Detroit skating club is of course owned by the club. No, there's been a relationship, Mr. Mazur, who isn't here along with Jay, has had a long time relationship with the Detroit skating club and its board and with Mr. Dungeon. And they've worked all this out in
We have an agreement in place on maintaining the plowing, basically the group will maintain all the landscaping and all of the parking lots, all of the maintenance of the underground.
Shared expense agreement.
Right.
Agreement with the board.
Let's take a 10-year design concept to try to sell to the individual owners and now they're all aboard with the concept. Like you say, this could be the premier development here and I wish you all the success. Sounds a little complicated, but everybody's on board and nobody's going to pull out because of cold heat or funding or whatever else may come along. I wish you all huge success.
Well, thank you. You know, it all, if you look at it this way, the skating club, of course, benefits from the dorms and also from the field facilities, but there's also training facilities, new ones that are going to be built that we're going to be able to tap into for the athletes with the soccer and the baseball. So it just, there's just a symmetry here that just works really well that the parties have come together with. But at the end of the day, as has been pointed out, there's a business aspect of this and those details have been worked out between the parties.
Hope you can all take a bow when it's done.
There could be a lot of ribbon cutting these last couple of years for everybody to come to, including members of the planning commission. That's right.
All right, if there's no, I would like to get the public comment. I have to open up a hearing. So let me just open up a public hearing if anybody would like to make a comment. Please, name, address, three minutes, et cetera, et cetera.
Hi, Mike McCready, 4957 Bloomfield Ridge. This is a wonderful project for an area that's really been hurting for quite some time. I think it started, what you said, 10 years ago as a concept and now to see it come to fruition, especially when this building, the tennis club, boy, back in, I think it was 2005, went through bankruptcy and got bought out of bankruptcy. And to hear about all the local athletes and the stardom that they've reached, it's fabulous. I encourage that you pass this. I'm not sure about the height restrictions and the other setbacks, but to me, it looks like they've done their homework and we welcome in the community because this area needs help and this is a great little start to fix the area. And one thing I might want to just bring to your attention, and I'll bring it to the trustees' attention, is as you're entering northbound off a telegraph off Franklin Road, that area with the light is really getting backed up to the point where I think it's, needs to be addressed by the road commission, Oakland County Road Commission. So maybe that's something that you all could also reach out to, to start with our traffic engineer, to start looking at that area so that we don't have any issues because as this area develops, that light and that intersection really is a lot of pressure to get into that community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any comments?
Okay. All right, then I'm going to close the public, I don't see any more. Close that, come back to the commission, final comments. Anybody have any final comments before you have a motion? I just have one. I said this last week, we had the golf, the tee time place open up in the 2026 summer, winter Olympics and the 2028 Summer Olympics, when they go to the gold medal, they get the podium, I would hope that you'd say that the training facility was in Bloomfield Township, not Bloomfield Hills. Okay? So I say that, I'll say that every time.
So noted.
All right. Okay. A motion, anybody?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, were you going to make one?
Yes.
Go ahead, no, I'll support it.
Oh, thank you. Well, on behalf of the Bloomfield Township Commission, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this along to the board of trustees for positive consideration, subject to compliance with the requirements of the township departments, compliance with the requirements of the town to landscape architect, seeking the required variances of the zoning board of appeals. Existing drive aisles and parking areas shall be resurfaced and striped in part, as part of the overall development proposal and seeking approval for signage from the design review board.
Is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Moving second?
Absolutely.
We had a second.
Andrea was second. Andrea did? Okay, very good.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Then let's
Did you add the, did I hear the traffic engineer in that?
Is that
Somebody was scribing it, I don't know. Were you
We'll include those comments as part of the minutes.
They'll be part of the board's minutes when it comes to the board.
All right, call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you, great presentation.
Terrific plan, very nice.
Look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
You see Travis. Sounds good.
All right, general business, items that are not on the agenda, does anybody have anything they want to bring up for discussion? See any? Okay. The next planning commission meeting is Monday, October 7th, if we have anything. Okay. If nothing else, then we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded?
Seconded, sure.
All right, very good. Thank you all very, very much. And thank you, folks. Thank you.